Okay, so that's your, I guess it's your call. Okay, so let the chair, let the chair know.
It's not that people make it this morning. He was waiting also on the IT position still departed, so. I think we should scrap it for today, reschedule it as well. Supposedly, I think so, because the county and the sheriff's side didn't vote, so.
Can you make that out of your motion?
Well, I don't know when we get there, we'll just say.
How do you want to do it? You have Mr. Motion.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna call this April twentieth, twenty twenty-two Commissioner's Special Meeting Order.
All right, thank you.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
I'm gonna move to approve the agenda as presented with the exception of removing item six and add two resignations as twelve C and call the.
Second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have any outlook comment today? Anyone? Hearing none?
A new station alert has arrived.
We want to listen to this.
We'll move on to item number two, our meeting minutes.
I'm gonna move to approve the minutes of the April fifth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting is presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we've got the report for our ARP that was submitted in.
I think Gene Santor is on there, Commissioners, if you have any questions, but. Yeah, John, John cannot be with us today.
Good morning, everybody.
Hello, Gene, do you have anything to tell us?
Uh, no, Scott, do you have the report or would you like me to run through that?
The Commissioners have a copy of it. I would just probably leave it as if they have any questions.
Okay. That's great, thank you.
Gene, I'm not sure if this is for you with John when he gets back, but. As I understand it, Arbeck is not. Arbeck is not getting funding from our broadband project here at the county. And I am curious as to how much more involvement that Mission Broadband will have with Arbeck now that they've gone in another direction.
You know, honestly, Commissioner, I don't know the answer to that, but I'm taking notes here and I'll check that with J D. And we'll get back to you. Will that work for you?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
I guess my, my concern is, is of course we're paying John to actively work on broadband issues, but if we know that Arbeck is not going to be applying for our grant monies, our broadband monies, should we devote much attention from NBI to Arbeck's needs? John, may I ask you?
Yeah, but I think part of it is too that Mission Broadband is gonna work to, I think we're also gonna have some relationship there first spots where maybe are gonna get missed by. Yeah, where we might have to do some kind of supplemental to.
I thought that was pretty comprehensive area.
Uh, well, well, it is, and I agree, John probably would be the best one to answer this, but in conversation with, with John, it's kind of sort of, we're monitoring. Thought the Commissioners would be interested in updates as to where this NTIA grant went and any relationship with our back. And then as the chair pointed out, if there are, as they overlay, they'll do a comprehensive overlay, but there will be gaps. And, and that's what we're kind of watching for. So if you want the focus to shift, then, you know.
Well, we don't know that yet.
Right.
And we don't know whether to shift till, till we do know that.
That would be my recommendation, right? Yeah, yeah.
I'll follow up with John, Scott, and Commissioner Clark.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Gene.
You're welcome.
We'll move to accept the broadband report as presented.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 The, yeah, Scott, is there a up-to-date counting of the communities that we know are not going to be accessing funds, our broadband funds, and you know how we, we basically took their.
You mean with the number?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have not released that because it's generally not really had much. I mean, if you're interested in it, I'll, I'll include a copy, I'll send you a copy. I'll, that's going to be my little tracking device and.
Yeah, which always been my contention that we shouldn't use it as a had and past number, but it is a good, good rule to tell us. You know, we've already been criticized for giving a substantial amount of money to a few towns and whatnot in relation to what they were, their portion of the money, so.
Yep.
I'm more curious, I guess sometimes I'd like to see that, see how we're doing and see how those funds are.
You're exactly right. That's been my, sort of my message all along with it is that it's, it's not hard or bad, it's a guideline, it's a, it's a good thing to keep an eye on, so I'll make sure that you get a copy of it.
Yes. Yeah, and again, it's early because it doesn't feel early, but things haven't shaken out yet.
Yeah, yeah, we're, yeah, yeah, that'd be a better conversation with John. We've expressed our concerns, no even to like, is everybody gonna hit us at once? So I'm really trying hard not to make that happen.
Yeah.
But in John's report, though, he has talked about confirmed they're not pursuing broadband projects, I mean, so that's pretty, pretty definite. That's, that's a community that's not going to be accessing the funds and under Scott's accounting there and whatnot, those funds have been put back into lump sum and tells us how much we have over and above each town's allotted amount.
Sure, I mean, I think that's all true. And, but we're also still gonna have to can have, you know, like a way where something might come up down here six months from now, nine months from now, and whatever, you know, Aurora is like, you know what? They thought you're all set, so you know what?
We've already done this. Arbeck was a good example. I mean, Arbeck's, those two communities got way more than their, their local assessment, but so we, I mean, we've already done that. That's what we need to know that.
But there might be some reverse of that is, I think, the point.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just like with the number, I think the status is a guideline too, but that status, well, I guess that status still gives you the same flexibility the number does. So even though it's not hard to pass, but you know, so if you're last to the supper table and there's nothing left, then we try our best. You know, you're kind of, you're kind of part of the, part of the issue and, and that with a lot of flexibility for the Commission, but yeah.
And I really, I really think that's the message we need to get out there too, is that if you people are interested, you better get, get up, get going. Because we don't have enough money perhaps to fund everything else there, so first come, first served. Those people ready, I don't again.
We've, I think Gene can, can certainly attest to it. We've sort of delivered that in a couple of cases, maybe not that direct, but.
Well, and John has also.
Yeah.
We've sent multiple emails to that effect with, with some of the towns, and my colleague keeps a record of that, so we have been trying to get that message out.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Miller? What have you got for us this morning?
Good morning, Commissioners. The first thing is the update on the Grand Lake Boat Launch Ramp. In your packet, you should have an email from myself and Deanna Circo. The last time we looked at this was before COVID hit. And there was some confusion about what the state owned up there, so they are hiring a surveyor to survey what land they own at Grand Lake, then we can determine how to move forward with the boat launch ramp. Ideally, the boat launch ramp would go out on the point. If the state doesn't own that, then the boat launch ramp would go beyond the gut. And if the state doesn't own that, then we're back to trying to dredge the, dredge the gut.
That's good, and it sounds like, well, here's some of that back in, in May, is that right?
Well, he thought the survey would be done first of May, so we may not have it for the first May, but we should have it for the mid-March meeting.
Perfect, sounds good. And your next item?
Euro Paxton Lands, the ATV grants that we did last year, they're being awarded again this year, and Bob Cassett is at this meeting. The Acadia area ATVists would like to continue this grant program if the Commissioners are willing.
So.
I think it's a good program and would recommend the Commissioners continue.
So, as I see it, this is the same pass-through program that we did last year?
I believe so. Mr. Cassett can clarify any changes.
Yes, it's the same program that they had last year, and our intentions are to, to continue the work that we started last year with some new work.
But the process of the pass-through was the exact same.
Same, our process is exactly the same thing, yes, Commissioner.
So I'm gonna move to continue the ATV grant pass-through, my program for area ATV clubs as we did last year as recommended.
Second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right, now we're number five, Leroy.
Morning. Um, I just wanted to bring the attention to open up with some discussion on, I got a email from the manager of customer and employee relations at Mystic Jet Center, which is a sister company of Columbia Air, asking to increase the overnight parking fees here at the airport. I did some analysis and I think you have, it should have come out in your packages. I, I surveyed, I think it was six different communities. And, you know, the, the numbers that, you know, they was looking at are substantially higher than any of the other communities' fees. The ramps are built with federal funds, so the way I understand it, and Columbia doesn't have a lease on the main, on their ramps, they only own about, lease about ten, ten to twelve feet from their building. My, my feeling is, is this area is an area where the county should set the fees and not the, not the tenant. So I'm just looking for a little bit of, I guess, guidance in that direction. I have put together a, a structure that I felt was a little more favorable to the flying public. My concern is, is if we run these fees up to these levels, that we're going to push people away from the airport, and that's not something that I, I think that we should do. Not only are we gonna, you know, it's gonna hurt the airport, but it's also gonna hurt the community where, you know, if these airplanes go away, we're not renting rooms at hotels, they're not rent, they're not going out to eat, they're not using taxi services or rental car services. So, you know, the community starts to lose benefit of the airport at that point also, so.
Leroy, I take it Columbia gets the parking fees?
Columbia, Columbia gets fifty percent of the parking fee. So Hancock County gets fifty percent, Columbia gets fifty percent for doing the paperwork and collecting the money.
So, I see Leroy's work here, and I also went on an AOPA, which is a Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association website, you can sort of get a look at what airport fees, parking fees are, you know, all over the country, so. I think it jives pretty close to Leroy's work. I only agree, I only disagree with one number, and that's the single overnight one, that's ten dollars seems pretty prevalent for those that have it. Fifteen dollars is definitely on the high side of any that I looked at, and that jives with Leroy's homework here, if you look at the averages and if you take an average of those, so. I'm prepared to make a motion, you know, based on the homework, our collective homework, and we only differ in one spot by, by five dollars. But I agree that, you know, where we should be attracting people to the airport, I, I have a few concerns that will take up in the next, on the next item, but I'm, I'm gonna move to set the airport overnight parking fees as follows: Single engine, ten dollars, light twins, twenty dollars, turbo prop, thirty dollars, heavy turbo prop, light jet, forty dollars, medium jet, fifty dollars, and heavy jet seventy-five.
And I might, I might just add, the monthly fee, what I come up with there was, basically you pay ten days and, and the rest of the month is free.
I'll second the motion. The, the, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at a fee structure here. The first column is the proposed fees, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
No, the proposed fees were not on Leroy's.
That's for the one I gave. No, I'm not looking at Leroy's, I'm looking at, I don't know who's I'm looking at, but I'm looking at, looking at the overnight parking fees two thousand twenty-two, I have a Columbia current. So what's the difference, what's the difference between the two columns?
So you're looking at the current one that says ten, fifteen, twenty?
Right. And then I'm looking at the first column, which is the parking fees for twenty-two.
Overnight parking fees for twenty-two, right?
What's the difference between those two columns? Is the first column the proposed?
First column would be the proposed, yes.
But I still believe that's, I don't believe that's accurate.
No, you should be.
So this is the requested for Columbia, it's different. This is the proposed.
Where's that?
It's not, it's not, that's why I'm thinking that.
But that's not what, that's not what the motion is on for, the motion is right here. Leroy's proposed fees.
I'll spread the copy for you in a second.
The spreadsheet that you're looking at, Commissioner Clark, here, I'm gonna give you.
I've got, I've got a good one coming, I guess the one I could be looking at.
Yeah, so for, for Leroy, the one that you said Leroy, the first column was not the proposed, I think it was repeat of what you proposed?
Yeah.
It was his original numbers.
No, the first column appears to be Columbia's request and then was currently being charged, and what Leroy's proposing, this is the sweet column, correct?
Yes, and my motion is verbatim Leroy's yellow column, with the exception of the overnight for single, Leroy had fifteen, I'm putting ten.
Handling means what?
And handling, I was gonna touch on that. As far as I understand, handling charge is a Columbia, you know, number, and I'm, I'm not sure that we have purview over that. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, yeah, that, that is their number that they put in for. And usually that fee is waived with the purchase of fuel. So if you buy X amount of gallons of fuel, they'll waive that fee. That's for, basically, the pilot that comes in, doesn't buy any fuel. Their staff goes out and takes care of them, gets their passengers, gets them into their cars on their way, the pilots come through, use their facilities, so, and that's, that's pretty industry common. Yeah, you know, it, it, it is a, a number that they came up with and.
For all six persons, we're not concerned with that, right?
We're not, because, yeah, we have no real control over that one.
Right.
I believe the only place we have control, any control would be the paved area that's, that's, you know, federally funded, and they're, they don't.
Parking fees for some of these airports, like Presque Isle, they don't have parking fees?
Presque Isle only had very few sporadic fees. When I talked to them up there, they, they basically pushed, and again, that's, that's a city-run airport, completely fueling, the, the fixed-based operator is the city. Talking with him, they basically, he says, you know, we, we don't charge a whole lot of fees. They, you know, they're, they're just trying to get people to stop there, buy some gas, you know, put a little money into the community and then go on to their wherever. So any of the blank spaces were non-comparable, you know, they did, the, the people I checked with didn't have a fee that tied to anything.
Right, I got a question.
Okay.
We had a, a change in fees.
What, what was that?
When's the last time we saw a fee change?
Oh, it's gotta be, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna say five years anyway. Maybe even longer than that.
Okay, thanks. Any other discussion?
Who knows? I was a pilot, I'd go to Brunswick for you.
Well, you know, what I was gonna, what I was going to interject is, a lot of the, like, you go to Brunswick and you buy fuel, you're not paying an overnight fee, you're just buying fuel there. Even if you go to Brunswick and you just go have lunch, probably you won't get charged a fee at all. I mean, this, this, what we're, the subject we're talking about right now is, is an overnight parking fee. And many airports don't charge it. Well, I haven't gone many places lately overnight, but I've always found it to be about half and half in my research. Just quickly on the AOPA site and jives with what Leroy came up with. Right to call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Do you have anything else for us, Leroy?
So the next one, item B is just authorization to send Stacy at Mystic Jet a letter showing what the decision was and what the structure was. The only thing that's in that letter that I drafted up and it, it needs to be cleaned up a little, I was working with Scott to help clean it up a little bit, but is the minimum standard, addressing the minimum standards? Technically, right now Columbia doesn't meet the minimum standards for their, what they have for, agreed to. And so I, I just wanted to kind of put that in, out there that, you know, we, we have read the minimum standards. It does say that their lease agreement ties them to the minimum standards, and they're not meeting it in the service end, the, the maintenance and avionics end of it. And, you know, that's part of, you know, what made this airport so unique is we, we, there was a full-service facility. It was attracting these small airplanes to come in for service, they'd buy some gas, they'd spend some days, and they'd go away. Now what we have for those people is, you know, they, they're getting some, some, some good line service. But there is no maintenance, if they get a, a bad engine check on, you know, to leave, they have no way to get it fixed. And, you know, you look at the pricing, and I'm gonna touch base briefly on the fuel pricing, is, you know, they're one of the highest in the state. So, you know, people, I, I have customers that are tenants that have year-round parking places here, you know, hangars and so on, it'll go to a neighboring airport to buy fuel because, you know, they do, because of the pricing, so, you know, I'm just a, a little bit concerned in some of those areas, and I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, we kind of address those and get the, get them on the table and knowing that, you know, we, we need to fund, we need to collectively come up with a solution.
Okay, so, I'm gonna probably be a little too wordy here, but first is I think, you know, the action that we took, just took, is separate, is a separate conversation on this one. In fact, I see two letters, one saying, you know, you asked fees to be this, this is what the county Commissioners did. Second, I think that we do need to send a letter to Columbia Air Service BHB, which is who our lease is with, out of the other, the legal entity is Columbia Service BHB. I think we need to send a letter to those folks expressing the Commissioner, Commissioners' concern that they're not meeting the standards for FBO categories specifically six and eight as defined in the, in the airport minimum standards. Those, that's the wording of their lease. I don't, you know, I agree with fueling, I have an airplane at this airport, and I don't fly a lot, but it is the most expensive in the state, you can confirm that, you know, again, on AOPA's website, but I'm not sure that the county really has the jurisdiction to step in with, you know, a private entity's pricing, although that there is, you know, some fees that we get back from that, but I'm not sure we're in the, we're in the, you know, we're in the pricing, you know, chain of command that determine pricing, so, but I, we do need to express concern. Their lease says that they are a category five, excuse me, six and eight full-service FBO, they're not providing that service, and we have concerns. And I think that's a separate letter.
Okay, so make your motion on the first, on the first issue with pricing structure.
We did.
We already did.
We already did.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so.
Oh, man.
So.
So you, so we don't need a motion to send them a letter on that?
Yeah, well, no, no, that's the pricing structure. My, my guess is the airport manager is gonna communicate to them what that pricing structure.
So the only motion on the floor needed is, is to craft a letter.
So this is what my proposal is after that long story. I'm gonna move to send a letter to Columbia Air Service BHB. Notice I didn't, I did not state a name there, but, you know, we are sending it to the leaseholder expressing the Commissioners' concern that Columbia Air Service BHB is not meeting standards for FBO categories six and eight as defined in the Hancock County Bar Harbor Airport minimum standards, period. I don't think it needs to be anything beyond that, that's what's in the lease.
Okay, I'll, I'll second the motion.
All right, discussion?
The only discussion I have is that whenever you draft, Leroy needs to be added, somebody needs to edit those, I mean, this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Edit it before you send it, so.
Yeah, so, I, and again, my motion is pretty simple, I don't, I don't, I think fewer words is better than more words here, I think we just, they need to know that we have concerns. And, you know, if they, my guess is they'll come back and say, you know, what are your concerns, and, you know, we'll, we'll tell them then, but we need to get this discussion going. But this airport is important to the county, it's, it's an important airport in the state, and it traditionally, it's been a full-service airport, and that's what we expect, that's what the lease with them, that's what their lease states.
All right, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, Leroy, that's it for today.
That's it, that's it for me. Thank you. That's it, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Leroy.
Run on the dot.
All she has is...
Oh, okay.
Let's just get...
All right. We'll jump to Julie and Deeds.
Morning. Just those two items, right? Yes, those two items. Okay, how about I, I'm going to move to advertise for a full-time deeds clerk position as recommended in budget for in the 2022 budget.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second item, I'm moved to advertise for two temporary full-time deeds clerks to be funded through the surcharge account as recommended.
Second?
It's just during the summer exam.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. It's, yeah, for two temporary. Did I say that?
Yeah.
Yeah, you did.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Look at that, 901, I'm sorry. I'm going to move to go in executive session as permitted by MRSA Title I, Section 405, Six E to consult with legal counsel.
Second the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.